Hey everyone, I'd like to call this meeting of the regional board of education to order. Thank you all for coming on this freezing cold night. Susan, can we take attendance quickly?
Yes. Valerie Anderson is absent. Judy Bedini.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Gregory Pava.
Here.
Michelle Gora here. Emily Hibbert is absent. She's first through.
Yes.
Kelly Locke. Absent. Cody here. Michael Sinatra.
Here.
I'm here. Peter Tagley.
Yeah. Alright, so at this moment Valerie, Emily, and Kelly are absent. Alright, I'm gonna move right to item two on our agenda. We have a very special presentation tonight. Elementary school music performances. Band with Mr. Vadi, I'm sorry, and choral with Mrs. Barrettski. So, whoever wants to introduce, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I am very excited to have you here, the musical talents of our elementary school students. We do have our presentation from all three elementary schools. And we're gonna start off with Mr. Navady, who is going to have the students perform using some instruments.
Alright, we have two selections for you tonight. First is a traditional tune, A Claire de la Lune. The second, another traditional tune, Lightly Row. The six students represented here are from all three of our elementary schools and are some of the best musicians in the world and they're great, so I hope you all can do whatever you want.
You ready for them?
Yeah.
Thank you. That was great.
Next, we'll be hearing from the choral group. And Ms. Barrettski is their instructor. I also wanna make a special note that these two teachers are new to our district this year, so we're very excited to have them come aboard. And if you weren't here a few months ago, we did have the secondary level performed, so it's great to see the progression from the elementary level to the secondary level. So these are students from the third, fourth, and fifth grade chorus at all three of the elementary schools. And this is a chorus selection that we performed at the winter concert called Everybody Going On a sleigh Ride. Let's ride! I wanna thank the families, the students, for your support for being here this evening. Thank you to the teachers, and I hope you all enjoy this celebration.
Thank you all very much for coming. It was very enjoyable, excellently done. Thank you. Really enjoyed it. Very timely with the weather out there. Okay, I'm gonna move on with the agenda. Hopefully everyone can hear me. Uh, next item on the agenda is to set the agenda. Our last few minutes from January 5th, this last half of January, more than a month, almost a month. Is anyone who wants to move anything from the set to the agenda? Right here, no one, then you can set the agenda's approved. Maybe I'll switch. Alright, item four, public comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to address us? I got my item four on our agenda, public comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who wants to address the board? Alright, I've seen no one, then I'll move on. Thank you. Report to the chair. I just wanna say a few things. First to Dr. Costantino, why as soon as spent many early mornings at the telephone, like the snowstorms, etc., it'll be a new experience for him. Thanks for all the work that you're doing and I'm trying to keep everybody safe.
Thank you.
And to our staff, and to our school bus drivers, who've all done a great job. It's been a difficult winter for everybody.
Accostians.
Accostians, a lot of showtime, okay? Just a couple of things I've noticed in the papers over the past, again, we haven't met since January 5th. Article that VG12 has maintained the highest pinnacle rating. I may be spitting somebody's thunder from another report, but that the credit inspection agency Fitch ratings recently affirmed that VG12 school district has maintained a pinnacle rating of AA+. That's largely in part to our financial officer Bob Geeson and his staff, and they deserve a lot of congratulations for that, so thank you all. What paper was that in here? This is the Waterbury Republican Day, January 29th. It's, I know it was in a few papers, but we have the highest school ratings, right? It means that we're a good risk. The statistic is. It says each district has its credit rating reviewed every two years. While AAA is the highest rating for municipalities, states, and countries, AA+ is the highest rating for school districts because of their inability to tax residents. So we're a good risk. There's been some positive articles about the agri-science center, and I know we're gonna hear more about that tonight, the application for the agri-science. I wanted to point out that a rare mother-daughter congratulations. Caroline Kelly, who's a junior in our high school, was named Republican American Athlete of the Week last week, February 17th. She plays on our girls' basketball team, had outstanding seasons. Unfortunately, they lost their virtual league game, but I know that they belong to the states and hopefully they'll do well there. And in addition, her mother, Joanne Kelly, and I don't have an article, I didn't see it, but I was told about it. It's my understanding, and I hope I'm not making a mistake, that Joanne was named CIAC Women's Tennis Coach of the Year. So CIAC is statewide, so that's quite an honor for Joanne, so congratulations to her. She's been out a long time, and a lot of her, well, her two daughters are excellent tennis players. So, congratulations to both of the Kellys on that. That's all I have. Next, superintendent's report.
Yes. Hi, everyone. It's been a long two months, but I'm glad we're finally getting a meeting in. I have a lot of things on my super tennis report. You don't really have to discuss them, but it's just for informational purposes. As of today, kindergarten registration at WPS is 15, at Booth Free is eight, and at Burnham is six students. So we have a 29 students so far enrolled in kindergarten for next year. Update on Chapaud. We are gonna talk about the agri-science program tonight and hopefully approving that application. And we also are working with the facilities on the science rooms. So that's coming in the future. Just wanted to let you know about that, that we are working on that. Before and after-school survey, I gave this out already to people who were here for some of the meetings prior to this. This is the information from, I don't know, if I don't have enough, I can get you more. We sent this to you, I believe. If not, we will. Do you all have that there? So anyway, this is the information that Tracy Lake put together for us. Tracy is from Education Connection, and that is the organization that we tried to have at school, before school program started. If you can remember the last meeting, we had a lengthy discussion about that, and I was asked to do a survey, so we did send a survey to all of the current students in the elementary schools, and as many incoming kindergarten students as we could get to respond. Plus, we surveyed the current sixth and seventh grade, because we're really looking at the numbers as next year's numbers. We tabulated the numbers, she tabulated the numbers. We had a couple of additional questions that were in our last year's survey that Burnham did, and one was, would you go to another school where the before and after-school program was being held if we provided transportation? So for example, I go to WPS, but I'm gonna go to Burnham for the after-school and before school program, gonna be back and forth to WPS. Or would you be interested in actually registering your child in another school if we held a before and after-school program there and we didn't provide transportation? So today, I didn't speak to Tracy, but my secretary did, Debbie, and this is the last page tells you, she reviewed the information and found that there are not enough numbers at any one school all by themselves. The numbers are not enough, as with any survey, when the time comes to sign up, only half as a rule will sign up. At this point, we could not go forward, it would not be feasible. Washington can close, but probably only half would actually sign up. So at this point, I am putting this on hold. We do not have enough interest. So, that's what we found out about that. Personnel, we do have a couple of resignation, well, one resignation, and a couple of appointments. The first one I could just wanna talk to you about is the new music teacher at Chapaud. He'll be starting at the end of March, maybe third week in March. He had to give a 30-day notice, and he really is very, very talented, and I think he's gonna be an excellent addition to our region. We have some field trips that you can see there. And that's at Barnard College, and the Brown Zoo, and Sturbridge Village. And then we have an update on my goals for evaluation, which we will do in executive session, but I did give you the goals. I'll just go through them quickly so that the people in the audience will know what I'm working on, and then the evaluation part can come later on. So basically, our first goal is the board's goal, which is to work on curriculum that we have been working on since I've gotten here, aligned with the common core, aligned with the S-PA. I'm very proud of the work that Mrs. DeBrito have done, Mrs. Ferrera, and all of the teachers, the principals, department chairs have worked very, very hard. We have many, many, many curricula have been written and put into Atlas. We're in very good shape for NEAS, and we really, we've done a really great job in this area, so I'm excited about that. Always, curriculum is a living document, so it's never done. It's like hanging your house. When you get done with that first room, and then the last room, then you gotta go back to the first one. So it's that kind of thing. But we're really in good shape. We're very excited about that. The second one is something I've been putting a lot of time into this year, and it's to work to promote and market our region. I've done a lot of work with Ann Baldwin. Hopefully you've seen a lot more articles in the newspaper. We've done a TV show, we're doing another TV show tomorrow, morning at 9:00 a.m. We have a little group of people from each town, one from each town, who are working on some publicity and how the towns and the schools can work together to support our schools. I'm attending legislative breakfasts all over the place. I was in Washington overnight, trying to get everybody to know that this application is coming to support us, and it's good for kids, and it's good for Connecticut, so really a lot of work in that. And we've got a lot of articles in the paper, and that again is a never-ending job, just, it's constant. Develop a comprehensive plan for K5 in regards to the multi-age or multi-grade classes. We are continuing to work on that. We had a long discussion about that at the long-range planning tonight, so that's something that we're still working on. At this point, our K1 configuration class at Burnham is doing beautifully. We get only competent length about the teacher and the assistants. I'm in there at least once a week, maybe more. The kids are happy, they're learning, so we're really excited about it. At this point, right now, I do not have another multi-age class in the budget for next year based on the numbers, but anything can happen in two weeks, but that's the way I am right now. My presentation will be March 9th. And, you know, we really are, we're disappointed when our meetings were canceled in February, because we had a great presentation on this, and I think when you see the presentation and you hear from the educators, they feel very comfortable about the way we're moving. So, more to come in that, the presenting on, I think, March 23rd. Well, to build that storm leadership team, I'm very much into delegating and giving people the option and opportunities to grow as leaders and administrators. We do a lot of meetings with our content coaches. Everyone has read The Advantage. We got Ann Baldwin presents to our administrators on how you do a proper presentation, so that I thought was very valuable, we're gonna do that with others. We have instructional leaders at the middle school and the high school who are working together and who are able to work across the grades, which is really good for vertical alignment of instructional programs and curriculum. You know, we have a lot of PD on curriculum writing, so we're very excited about that. That's been really helpful. On Monday, Dr. Karen Berg from WestCon is coming to talk about the instructional program at WestCon, which both myself and Mike, that are doctorates in, to encourage our administrators and our teachers to go further in their education. And we're doing a visit of the Sked Magnet School on March 4th, and you're more than welcome to do that. That's the new school, where we're hoping we'll get kids to come here in the future, so we're excited about that. We have a lot of staff going to that. That's a PDK meeting, and I am the president at WestCon. Done a lot of work on implementing teacher evaluation. I'm not gonna go into that too much. We continue to do a lot of work in technology. I'm very proud of all the work that Karen has done, Sheila, Vic, all of those teachers in that department. We have, from where we started to where we are now is really amazing. We have NEAS coming in a month. I know that Kim and Lori and the staff has been working diligently to make sure that we get a wonderful report. Be really proud of what they've done, and I've assisted them wherever I can, so we're excited about that. The TV studio up and running, we're working on that. I'm knowing to work with the Board of Education, grow professionally. I think we are in better shape where we were. I think we can always continuously improve. We have Ann Baldwin coming back on March 30th, our next retreat. The referendum for Chapaud, I'm working on that. The budget, I'm working on that. And then number 12, which I didn't really have the chance to write everything, I'll do that at the end of the year, but putting a lot of time and energy into establishing Chapaud, excuse me, it's the 20th Agri-science STEM School in Connecticut, which is another big job. So that's what I've been up to. It's been a tough beginning of the year because of the snow, because you spend half a day just rescheduling everything that you're supposed to do, but things are good. We're in a good place in the region. And then, as I said, at the end of the meeting, we can go to executive session, talk about that.
Alright, thank you. Was there any questions for the superintendent?
I think Zalson just hearing that.
Alright, thank you. Just going back to my report, I did wanna mention, I received a card addressed to the VG12 Board of Education from Pat Lowe, Bucky Lowe's wife. VG12 Board of Education, thank you for the flowers, such a remembrance. Bucky truly loved helping education, a wonderful gentleman. Pat Lowe and family, so that was from that. Alright, item seven on the agenda, approve revision to the 2016-17 school calendar.
Yes, if you can remember at the meeting that we did this, I think it was June 5th, I have no idea, but I talked to you about the calendar that is redrawn. Well, in the interim between when we approved this and now, the state was getting a lot of flack, and they have allowed a three-day window to when they say the first day of school should be. So on this calendar, we had August 31st as the first day of school, because that was their original date, but now that we have the three-day window, I backed it up to August 29th, and then we're ending on the 14th as opposed to the 16th. Everything else is really the same, just pushes the days up to the week before for orientation and teaching, how many days for staff. So I think it's a better calendar, I like starting on a Monday better than I do on the Wednesday, and being that we had this opportunity, I thought it would be a good idea to make the change.
Do you need a motion to approve that?
Yes.
And would we approve that to you?
Sorry. Should move in second, is there any further to change to cap that one?
I do agree, it's better to start on a Monday, and so they have a full week, and then they have a long weekend with Labor Day on the day. So that looks good. So that looks good.
So the motion is to revise the calendar for the 2016-17 school year to start on Monday, August 29, 2016, and plan to end last day of school, Wednesday, June 17, June 14, 2017. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that's it. Go pass this thing.
What's the last of school is this year?
This year, right now, is June 18th. Graduation is the 13th. That's where we are right now. I could send you some updated dates of this week.
All right, item eight, to consider if appropriate, approve technology grant through the Connecticut State Department of Education for district technology upgrades to support transition to the new standards, 2014-15.
Karen will talk about that. Karen Viles, quickly.
All right.
Hello. The grant that I have submitted to the state, or that I'm hoping to submit to the state is part of their second annual, it's a technology grant fund that's meant to support the common core state standards, the implementation of the common core state standards in S-Back testing. Last year, we received just under $50,000 with this grant, which was used to purchase servers, filtering system, and to extend the wireless down to the elementary schools. So this year, we are submitting a second grant. We're hoping to add some crowbooks and some additional infrastructure work, wiring work that needs to be done down at the elementary schools. So much of what we're going to see in this grant is already in the technology budget for next year. So what I'm hoping to do is have state funding to cover those costs. So that's what I'm asking.
Do you need anything from us?
I think you just need to approve it. We are eligible to send it in. So move second.
Well, how much is it for?
The grant is submitted for $108,000, but it's, the way the state funding works is they fund about 33% of it, or just under 33%. We don't actually know the exact funding rate until it's actually approved in April. But we sort of assume that it'll be around that 33% rate, depending on what the state budget looks like.
Any other questions? It's removed and seconded to approve this technology grant as described in this form. Any further?
I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to put it together because you don't have to, but it definitely helps out the district. And so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you. All right, number nine, acceptance of the 2014 Region 12 Annual Audit Report. Valerie?
I don't have my copy.
Mr. Gason, you honor, who's going to take this?
I can just do by introduction that we have an unqualified opinion yet again by Charles Haven. He sat with us and...
Who's us?
The Finance Committee. And went over it and answered all our questions. Basically, it's the highest opinion we can get, which means, you know, the audit went beautifully. And if you give me a minute and a half, because this is kind of important, I wanted to focus on a couple of things. $69,958 would be returned to the three member towns according to their registration.
Sorry, can you say that number again?
In terms of the different accounts, we looked at everything. A few things that jumped out, as always, we review what's going on in the cafeteria. And we are running a deficit. It is a difficult program to be self-sufficient. The way we wrote it now is that all benefits for the staff, that is to say cafeteria staff is in there, so therefore we run a deficit. So we've decided that we need the program. We're not going to make a change right now, even though we've had an increase in the lunch cost. And we're just going to fund that more on the general fund. So we're going to have to continue to look at that as a deficit, but it's frankly no big deal. The other thing that we talked about is the pension plan. And once again, we, the pension plan is on a very good footing. We are transferring that to Wells Fargo. We had a brief presentation by representative of Wells Fargo. We'll have a deeper conversation February 9th, I'm sorry, March 9th, about the portfolio. But basically, actuarially, we are very well-funded. So then you will see a contribution out of the operating budget. We don't have to make any large increases. We are on a good basis right now. I think we're 106% funded. So that was the other part of the good news and...
So let me just ask you about that. That's the Region 12 Pension Plan for non-certified staff?
Right, not teachers, not teachers, just staff. There's about 112 that are affected. And I think that that's about, Bob, if you want to jump in now, that's about it. I mean, it's just a really good audit.
You know, everybody that has a copy of the audit, please, in front of you, sent you. The check's a bit cut depending on your approval of it tonight. And as Valerie said, the pension audit makes almost 105-plus percent. So we're in good shape on that as well. Valerie, you have all the other?
All right, it's an unqualified opinion, is what I understand. All right, is there a motion to approve the audit?
Several.
All right, it's removed in seconds. Is there any further questions?
And I asked Bob just briefly about this on the email. The surplus at the end of the year that is returned to the towns is a certain number. Was there another surplus that we then had to allocate for other expenses? I know we've used instruments or repair project or replacement of equipment. Did that happen at the end of the year? Or was the surplus calculated after all that, not before all that?
The surplus was calculated after it transferred to the 1% bunch and after all purchases were made.
Anything else?
Is there any way to avoid surplus?
May I answer?
Yes.
Please do. We have tried since I've been here to reduce that surplus every year because I think it's important if taxpayers give you that money to spend in your schools and your children, you should spend it on your schools and your children. So what we do is we do have a deferred purchase plan. So I will, because of the fact that you never know what's going to happen in the middle of the school year. If someone moves in, we need special services, extra funding, special placement. So we do put a deferred purchase program in place. And when we're kind of sure that we're okay budgetarily, then we will spend the money that I put aside for different things. That's last year, we were able to buy the pianos. But it's very, I've asked Charles Haven, you know, can I spend in October, November? He says you really can't. So Bob knows, I think he's heard from me and he's heard from members of the Finance Committee. You know, we don't mind getting money back, but we also want to make sure that our needs are met when we have extra money.
Yeah, the taxpayers never see the money anywhere. It disappears into the town budgets and bingo, it's gone.
It's hard to get it to zero. But I think when I was first coming, my first couple of years, before I got here, it was like $200,000. And then it was, I think, our first year, $200,000. Last year was a little less, so it keeps going in the right direction.
It was $276,000.
$276,000.
So 69 is a good lead.
If I might, getting to a zero surplus, of course, is very complicated and difficult because we do have issues of, once again, special ed kids moving in. We have to provide services. But the Finance Committee has been invited to the budget workshops. And we're hearing from all the administrators, through Pat and Bob. And they have to substantiate just about every request. We get the backstory on what their needs are and why, and why is there an increase or a decrease. And they really are bringing in only what they need to a point where, you know, most departments are showing decrease in their needs or if anything, a very small increase. So that process is great. So we can really see behind the numbers. And it's remarkable to me how really close we get to that final budget. So it's reassuring.
And if he knows. All right, it's removed and seconded to approve this 2014 Region 12 Annual Audit Report. All those in favor say aye.
Have a question, can you approve or accept?
Accept, I'm sorry. To accept the 2014 Region 12 Annual Audit Report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, it's accepted. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Number 10, to consider if appropriate, authorizing expenditure on amount not to exceed $292,418 from the Elementary Capital Nonrecurring Fund, lease, current lease and permanent, as recommended by the Facilities Committee. Correct?
Yeah. Facilities Committee took this up at its meeting on the 4th of February. And if you've had an opportunity to review the minutes which were included with this, you'll see the explanation of what happened with this list. Initially, there was a meeting with the pre-first selection and a list of priorities, which if you see this particular item in your package, that list of priorities is on the left-hand side. Mr. O'Leary later reviewed that list of priorities as he sat down and tried to put these into construction projects. He discovered that some didn't fit quite in the right order and sequence, and it needed to be reworked slightly. So he made some modifications to that list in order that we could give the maximum deference to the priorities that the towns had, but at the same time, do it in such a way that we'd be able to actually effectively create new construction projects. So that we could do it efficiently and make the best use of the money and accomplish where our goal was. So there are a couple of changes, but not too many. It's pretty much, we're pretty close to the same order. And that's what we're recommending that you approve is the, Mr. O'Leary's list on the left, on the right, I'm sorry, on the right side, as the order in which these expenditures will be done. You may also see in your package, a financial analysis that Mr. Gason did. And that financial analysis is of how much money is in the fund. And you'll see that the fund balances, you'll see the payments that have been made in the 2014 to January 2015 time, how much is encumbered through January 31st of 15, and then the projects that are approved. Bottom line is, is that there is about $292,418.70 in unencumbered funds. And that's what we're proposing, be expended to address this priority list. It's not going to finish this priority list. It isn't going to get us to the bottom of this list. It's going to take us a good way down the list, but it's not going to get us all the way there. But the idea is, is that we would address it in the order of priorities as Mr. O'Leary has proposed in taking care of these items to the elementary schools.
Mind any questions? So is my understanding correct that if this motion is approved, you have the entire fund will be encumbered?
The entire fund will be encumbered if this motion is approved until next year, when another $100,000 goes into it.
I appreciate all the work that the Facilities Committee has done and in meeting. And I have complete faith in Valerie, but I don't have a list.
No.
We need to get a list.
There is a date that you have on that list. That would have two or three.
Is there, like, in your minutes?
This, well, this was supposed to be attached to the minutes. But it did not, it appears that it did not appear there. I thought this was previously included before.
Don, you have the list?
I have some copies.
Okay, make some copies.
No, I have.
For everyone down?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's, yeah, let's definitely ask that. Don, I'm sorry, I should have.
I think we have enough.
Okay.
My mistake, I thought that had been.
You know, I thought we got a prior meeting. I just know what you think, just push back and forward.
Pat, I'm sorry.
Karen just took it to a big topic.
Yeah, maybe that makes sense. Tabled this until we had a chance to look at it and involve them. They will come back to it tonight, we'll take it on.
Basically, at the end of the day, it's the list of items prioritized. If I'm correct, it's the list that I saw, criticism, which is it was prioritized by the first selection and then prioritized by the administration. And they agreed very closely.
They were very close. A few things were moved up a little earlier in the process. A few were moved down since the projects and staff were.
But the point is of that usual team that we talked about in the board and the Facilities Committee and the administration, quickly, the facility and the first selection. Everyone's in concurrence.
I don't know whether or not this has been, Mr. O'Leary's list has been passed by the review. The way the process works is if we have a meeting, a proposal is made, then the board. And the way the process works is no proposal is received from the towns, then superintendent makes a proposal. But in this case, we have a proposal.
Are people more comfortable moving on to the next item?
I'd be happy to talk about the various items of what was moved.
Can I just ask a quick question as for format? I'm having some real problems getting to my Google minutes here. But you have a dollar sign, but on this, it's just a priority list. I mean, how did you come to such a specific dollar sign?
That's what's left of the fund because we know we're going to deplete the fund. If Don has a calculation of what we expect as the cost, and the 21 items on this list is in excess of $200,000.
I'm sorry, I didn't see page two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now I understand. So we started from 90, we add 100, we go to 490, less.
We add little income, we get to 490, then less the payments that have been made and less what's encumbered from January. And that gets you to 354. Then we have projects that have been previously approved, payments made at different times, and what's encumbered, but these are remaining as a complete balance. And that's subtracted from, adjusted, is subtracted from what we hope was in there, and that gets you to the 292.
But is your list, does it look like you're going to eat up the entire balance of 292?
Oh, absolutely. Before you even get to the end of the list, I don't know where the break-even point is, but you would not like that you get to that there. I mean, the big item is the number one priority of the towns is the paving. And that is, that remains as the number one priority in the district list. We had to move up the replacement of those basements or stairs because of the condition. But they were supposed to be number five, we moved up to number three. As you can see, their number three item became our number two item. So there've been slight jiggering and adjustments, but the items that are in the top are mostly the same as what was in here. One item that moved considerably up the list is the issue of roof ladders. And this is because we have no access, no ready access to the roofs of some of these buildings without these ladders. And we can't do maintenance without that access. So we had to move that up on the priorities list. It was a higher priority for the district because of the need for access for maintenance. So if you look at this, you'll see that by and large, the last priority is still the last priority, the next to last, the one before that are still last. So the top items are generally still the top items, which are going to get done. And the bottom items are still the bottom items. So it was just with some rejiggering within the middle of the list. Michelle, do you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to say I really like the, sort of the philosophy and format about this in prioritizing the list and the board saying that you can go up to, obviously, the funds in the account. I think in the past, we got hung up on the cost of a specific project, and then it would come out to be higher than the estimate, and then you'd have to come back to the board. Basically, we're just saying, work on the list until you run out of money. And I think that makes it less cumbersome for the process of having to come... that makes it less cumbersome for the process, having to come back to the board with new estimates, or unencumbering the money that we had approved so that you can change the amount. It was just, the whole process was difficult. So I think this is a great way to handle that fund and the work that needs to be done in those schools.
Bella.
So basically, everything on the right side is going to be done according to priority. This was their suggestion, but this is what we're going to do with $292,000 if we were to do that.
We're just starting at the top. Two hundred ninety-two thousand is not going to get you through either list.
Agreed.
We're going to be short. We're not going to get everything done on these lists.
Okay, but just to understand, though, what you're working on would be the right-hand list.
The right-hand list is the list we're proposing for Don.
Okay. Now, I want to ask about the internal classroom phone system technology upgrade for all three schools since '15. I just want to make sure this is not a security issue.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Michael. The roof ladders that you mentioned, Greg.
Yeah.
Are those secure so that students could really have access to them?
What happens is the ladders are, the ladders are rolled up, not rolled up, but they're pushed up, so that they have to be brought down, they have, there's a lock that has to be opened. But Don, maybe you want to give us the details on that?
Yeah, in this particular case, I'm only going to put on the higher parts of the building, I won't put anything below where anybody can access. We'll come up to the building with a small ladder to get us up to that.
Great. No extra monkey bars then?
No.
Okay. The other question I had was that some of the items on your, on your list here, intrusion security, front office monitors for front doors, sounds an awful lot like safety and security. Is there any state funding, you know, post-Sandy Hook for any of those upgrades, or is this just something each individual district has to bear on our own?
There was state funding for that, there may still be some state funding for that, but I don't think there's a lot. Don, do you have any details on that, or Bob?
The priority school districts took most of that money in the bonding that they just did, and then they did a second round of bonding on this, and they haven't released anything out of it at this point, so we may not see any more out of it again. We're just too wealthy.
Because they never attack wealthy school districts.
It's got to go on a whole people basis, that's for sure.
Anything else? Ellen.
Just a couple of quick questions. One, mentioning the front office monitors for front doors, don't we have those already? I mean, I don't, we have WPS at Vernon.
Are you asking?
Yeah, we have them already. What's the project?
In the front offices, there is a three-inch square monitor on the desk of one of the employees in the office. We're proposing putting something on the wall that's substantial size that everybody could kind of glance at and see it.
That makes sense, okay. So it's a size, it's surprising. The other thing is, what is the, an old buddy with the window wall in Vernon, that is on here, is that a seven?
It's already funded by the last year's budget, and we're going to probably do that this summer.
Oh, good, because I just know that the estimates kept changing.
Yes, it was twice what we had funded, but by this summer, I'll get the money up.
And my last question, just to make this feel a little better, knowing that you can't predict anything, as I slide my finger down, where do you think you're going to run out of money on this list?
Yeah.
Please don't. Half to two-thirds, maybe?
Well, that's good. I was afraid it was going to be like, bang! Okay, thank you.
The first item is seventy thousand bucks.
All right, yeah. Okay, thanks, Don.
Anything else? Are you certain? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just want to know that, two things, that this satisfies the terms of the lease with our first selectmen, they're happy about this compromise list, and number two.
No, I, I'm.
Did we ever change the lease wording so that your choreography of inspecting the schools with townspeople is, you know, there was a problem with the lease, and you had to change the language.
All right, let me answer those, let me answer those questions in reverse order. We didn't change the language. We conformed our practice to the lease. So we now do what the lease says, in the order that the lease says, and at the times that the lease says it. Something that had fallen by the wayside for a variety of reasons, wasn't because we didn't try, but it just, we couldn't get people together and whatnot, but we now have conformed our practice specifically to it. So that's not an issue.
Good.
Don, I don't believe this list, your list, priority list that you're proposing, has been circulated to the towns.
It's the same list, it's just a different one.
It's changed the order, but it's basically, it is the same list. Everything on here is the same as on here. The bottom three items are the same bottom three items, the top item is still the top item, and the top five or six are still about the same, except for the roof ladder. That was the only one that popped into the top six that wasn't in the top six. And the repair of the rotted wood base of columns, that's over at Vernon, has been moved down the list a little bit. But other than that, it's pretty much been replaced by the roof ladders for all intents and purposes. So.
But does this satisfy them?
Well, I don't know if it's satisfying or not, but what we're obligated to do is to make a decision based on what the towns have requested, as to whether or not what they've requested is in the best interest of the district. That's what the lease says. And what we have done, what Mr. O'Leary has done, the administration has done, has been to reconform the list so that it rejiggered the priority, so that it gives effect to what the towns want as best as possible, but does it in a way that is to the best advantage of the district, and able to take advantage of it and implement a project that makes sense, where individual items are done at the times, and where the priority is given. For example, the IT closet cooling that's required, that was moved up to priority two, primarily because we can't, the existing situation, and this is in the Washington primary, can't exist the way it's going on without that cool provider or IT equipment, there's going to be problems, Don.
The reason that I, Greg's right in my reasoning, but ultimately, it's my understanding that the superintendent has the last call. It's her choice. While all the select people may have put this in order, I believe it's in our best interest to change the order in some ways in order to receive the call.
Right, anything else?
Can I have, I have a question about the playground equipment. If the paving is costing seventy thousand right off the bat, and everything else is also a priority, how much playground equipment would be provided?
This is for region?
Yeah. Because playgrounds cost an awful lot of money.
Now, the REACH, when they moved from this location to W P, they left behind a few spring toys. It's not, this isn't a playground like you're thinking. It's just a few toys that are embedded into the, into the ground so that they rock that important. It's not a lot. And there may be some alternate funding in REACH programs to do this too, so we may be able to.
Is there anything else, Michelle?
Has it been on?
No.
A move we accept, this list, and through, what is it, has it been up to, but not exceeding $292,418 from the Elementary Capital Nonrecurring Fund, as recommended by the Facilities Committee.
Second.
Right, it's moved to second. Is there anything further, Greg? Talking about the, the list that's been handed out to all of us, the figures on the right-hand column. Is there anything further? All right, so all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, excuse me? Any standing? All right, passes, thank you. Thank you all for your work, Greg, Don, everyone who's been involved in the committee, I know it's been a lot of work, so thank you. All right, item eleven, to consider an appropriate approve application for the Agri-Science STEM Academy. Let's go.
Bill is going to hand out the final copy. I've emailed you a few iterations, and I want to thank everyone that sent feedback. That was very helpful to us, we made some changes as a result, and what we see tonight is complete and ready to go. I could not leave you any more please to present this application to you this evening. I'm going to put on the binder in front of me that any of you are welcome to see, that has absolutely everything about that, the ag program, and what you have in front of you is the application. So, what I'd like to do is to take you through that application, and then to answer your questions. As you look at the application, the first two pages are self-explanatory, they're simply the introduction, the cover page, the application, and the place, once you have voted, where you will sign and say that you approve. When you start getting into the application, section two, application narrative and data, this is where the planning and advisory committee is outlined. These are all of the folks that have volunteered to provide their advice to us as an advisory committee, and also to provide our students with SAE locations, and I'll remind you, that's a supervised agricultural experience, students in AI program, put in $200 a year in supervised agricultural experiences. So as you look through, the best column to look through is, to look at the last column to the right, because you start to see the diversity of careers that we have, from a variety of farms, equine veterinarians and veterinarians, vegetable and fruit production, therapeutic horse riding center, on and on and on, golf course superintendent, and there's also quite a few organic farmers that are interested in this program. As you go to the needs assessment, which can be found on page six, the needs assessment talks about a couple of different things. First and foremost, the Region fourteen catchment area is too large, and too many students are denied an opportunity for this education. That's where this all started. It all started with Bill Davenport, who I've worked very closely with, and really is the brainchild behind this, and deserves full credit for that. Bill doesn't like to turn down kids for an opportunity that he knows to be a valuable one. He has spent time in his career looking to see what can be done so that more students can have this opportunity. Another part of the need, if you look in the second paragraph, is that the agricultural industry is a very large and growing industry, and it's needed in our Connecticut economy as well as in the United States. Breakdown to the Census Bureau figures, which talks about our students from ag programs having an average starting salary of more than $51,000, and they tend to work their way up to management positions and earn approximately $800,000 more than the typical college graduate, which is not a small thing. Not until the third paragraph do we get into the specific issues to our region. Yes, our region is an ideal setting for this, and yes, this also serves a need in our community for a stable population, and there's supporting data to go along with. If you have any questions, go ahead and stop me, I don't want to belabor any one point of this. We also have received letters of support, starting on page eight. We've also received letters of support from a variety of people in this area, from state senators, to faculty of prestigious institutions, to, again, people that are in this career, in this life, and are committed to what it gives to kids. As you move on to page ten, you can see that the, an overview of the program for four years, from a freshman exploratory program to the sophomore year, where students start to begin to focus on their chosen area, and have a more in-depth experience, to the point of junior and senior year, where you really are specializing in an area of agricultural pursuits, and you're doing that of your own choosing, but after having been fully informed of what they need in the classroom. Activities to link our programs to post-secondary education are clear at this point. You can see, and this is page eleven, number four, you can see that there are a number of colleges that supply non-woke students who earn these credits with college credits. College fairs that are held in agri-science programs draw important schools, and schools that know that they have committed to students. This is, the benefit of an agri-science program is that colleges, as well as employers, as well as community people, know that these are students that have a commitment, a focus, and they take that very seriously. We also talk on page eleven, number five, about what we will do to let the community know about this program once this is underway. Community open houses, tours to the facility, so on and so forth, as well as an outreach program that would happen so that all of the students in our catchment area are very well aware of what we have to offer. On page twelve, there's an important piece of data, which is that indicate relationships to existing regional agricultural science and technology education centers in your area. I believe that this is the part where we say that we're working together with Region fourteen, that this is a purposeful effort between these two systems, there's no competition, there's no rivalry, and the other two centers that are contiguous are not affected by this application at all. We're not stealing students from anyone. This is a purposeful effort to divide a catchment area that's too large, and to provide more opportunities for students. On page fourteen, you start to look at what will happen, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot number eight, which is on page fourteen as well, ethnic and racial diversity. As you know, ethnic and racial diversity is not exactly plentiful in this area. When we begin to accept students from other communities, then obviously, we will have more chances to expose our students to different, different systems, different students. Frankly, new competition, one of the things that has resonated with the PTOs, the Lions Club, and the different places that Dr. Cosentino and I have been going to on the, what I've termed the ag road show. One thing that is resonating with the public is that our students, we are so small, they don't have enough competition, whether it be in the classroom, you know, an AP class was for students, and it is not as valuable as an AP class with fifteen good models. These students that come in would also be athletes. Our athletes, if they have to try out, they don't have to fight for their positions. We're small, everybody does everything, that's a wonderful thing, but more competition is more competition for our students, more different experiences, experiences outside of the bubble. These students would also be artists and musicians, and we know that that would benefit our programs as well. So if you look at the bottom of the page, you have an estimate based on today's numbers, because the state sets the reimbursement. You have the total estimated enrollment in year one, year two, and year three. Remember, year one is eighteen, nineteen? So you have estimates of the total estimated district income, and Bill is going to go over a sheet that he gave you. This is exactly what the application requires. So what Bill has designed is a, is a single sheet that shows you that relationship of dollars coming in and dollars going out. Page fifteen is a chart that is a part of the application, that shows you the different areas and descriptions that happen within an agri-science program. And now you start getting into, on page seventeen, the heart of the matter, which are the major activities for center implementation. activities for center implementation. You have to realize that to, these don't come with sales slips, all of these different items. These are estimates. They're based on a healthy figure rather than a bargaining figure. This is going to be less as time goes on and the concept becomes more firm. Remember that this is an application. At this point, this is at a very conceptual level and more detail will come as more approval comes. And I will point out to you at the end that when you apply to be an agri-science center, that is not saying, "I am committing, no matter what happens, we spend that money for the next three years." You can withdraw at any time. So when you look at this list, it is an estimated list, to be sure. If you look at, yes?
I'm sorry. I'll ask you.
Okay. If you look at page 17, you see programmatic activities, which is very general. We have recruitment efforts, certainly curriculum development, and some staff in the year, in the planning year, 17, 18. And on the other side, you have a lot of equipment. There are categories such as large vehicles and equipment, landscaping equipment, conservation equipment, animal science equipment. I don't want to go on and bore you because you certainly can read, but this is a big list of pretty much everything you need if you're going to start an agri-science center. Yes?
Where's the staff?
The staff is on the programmatic activities. In the planning year, there will be one staff person. That's on page 17, the planning year 17, 18. When you go to...
This is yearly 588.
I'm sorry? Tell me, oh, okay. You're now on page 22, year one of implementation. Then you can see a list of staff required, as well as the support staff, the secretary, additional custodian, and the other programmatic activity would be some training for staff. Yes?
Now, I think it's my question. What I've had trouble in looking over this thing, understanding, are the, I mean, I guess what my format, I mean, I don't know if this is the format the state requires. The problem is, is that these numbers, whether they be for facility, equipment, motor vehicles, or programmatic, which includes personnel, these numbers are not isolated numbers. Every year, you acquire more.
That's right.
For example, if your planning year is 125,000 programmatic activities, you then get to your implementation year, which is 588. Now, is that 588 plus the 125 continues into that year? So that's really six, a little over seven. And then in the next year, you add another 108. So now you're about eight. And then, and then, you know, then by the time you get to the full implementation year, you're about an eight and change on that side. And I don't quite understand the equipment side because I don't know whether those numbers aggregate. Some of them are covered, so you're really only talking about an annual debt service, a lot of that stuff. And so I guess the difficulty is trying to figure it out. It looks to me like this program is going to cost, it's going to ratchet up to the point where it's costing about $1 million a year and it's turning out tuition and other state reimbursements and local reimbursements of about $1 million nine, or maybe $2 million a year. So it looks like it's a net positive of about $1 million a year. Do I have that correct?
Yes.
And this is round estimate?
Absolutely. And that's the concern. If I was running the state of Connecticut, well, a lot of things would be different if I started in Connecticut. But this forum, again, this doesn't happen since 1989, since they took this application for a new ag center, dusted off and kind of made it available now. And the last one was in Bloomfield in 1989. And truthfully, no one at the State Department that was involved with that last new ag center coming onboard is still there. So they use this, this is the most frustrating way to show it, that this is the application they require. So what I did to answer that exact question is just a one-pager that carries over those costs, like you just said, so you can see year one, two, three, and four, as well as planning year two, year three, to see that on one piece of paper. So I knew that would come up, but the way that is written, you have to show like new costs and not carry it over. I just, I would change it if we could. So this just kind of explains that.
Well, of course, since the state doesn't have to pick up the cost of the program, they're not serving a year, they don't care.
Yeah, there's a lot of things we need to change.
They're looking at something totally different.
Yes.
Which is, it's okay.
The real thing with the application is, I'm pretty sure, it seems like they want to see that Chapag in Region 12 is serious about this, has thought of everything, and are going to operate a full comprehensive program before they say, "Yep, you're the twentieth." Then the planning gets going and everything else on that too. So this one sheet, I hope it's clear. I did it like five times and it seems to be in my mind, but please correct me if I'm wrong. First column is planning year and then year one, two, and three. Anticipated revenue is the bottom of that tuition, total revenue page that we had in the application. So the first year is year, because there are no kids there yet. Year one, the 564, year two, and year three. So that's your revenue coming in for state operating grant of $31.90 per kid in district and in other districts, plus the tuition, which is right now 68.13, I believe. And that might, that's probably going to change next year also. But as of right now, if you start it and project it out, that's what the income or revenue would be. And then the new anticipated cost is how they want us to print this on the application, which is what you were just saying, that you have 125 grand in the first planning year, then 678, then 208, then 138, and then year, for the year three, that's what it would be. So what I did is that accumulated costs, that carries that forward, so that you can see that the total cost is the 125 plus the year one is 678 equals 803. And then the same thing, 803 plus the new 208 gets you to your million dollars you were just talking about, and then a million one in the end. So that the potential gain or loss, if you will, is the revenue minus that total cumulative cost each year. So the bottom line, first couple of years, you're behind, but then you start becoming ahead. And then year four, when you get seniors in, you're bringing in another 15 or so kids so that the revenue will go up. And the only cost for year four would just be the operating costs of consumables used, which is about 100 grand or so. So that's how...
Right. But those two first years, when you're actually in the red?
Yeah.
You're in the red to the two, the 1/20th of the budget, the first year, our current budget, actually less than that. And the second year is less than 1/10th. These are relatively minor...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Two-year investments to then produce a relatively steady, healthy income stream, which makes the program more than self-sufficient.
Exactly. And another question that some people may have is like, is year one, I think there's five staff that we guessed would be coming, you know, before we have that many kids, what you need to do is have the center operating in order for you to attract kids, in order for you to have eighth grade parents' nights, and they come and see. They need to, they can't say, "See, two high-flying greenhouses that are empty and nothing," like, "Yeah, we're definitely, as soon as we have kids, we're going to have it going." And that's why you have the upfront, get the staff here, get them to work with kids who are here, get them to work with senior project kids, get them to work with the middle school. In the first couple of years, kids, get them excited about it, get it rocking and rolling. And then as the kids come in, there's no more staff needed because it'll even off and then you'll have your...
You have to stay.
Yeah. If you want to ask her.
If I can understand this though, on page 21, to open the doors, we need to invest 1.5 million in equipment.
Yeah.
And is that carried forward here?
No. 80% of it's reimbursed by the state, minimum 80% is back.
Right.
But it's not in here, it's not reflected in this at all.
Correct. On that sheet, correct.
Keep in mind, we're applying to the state, they already know that.
Right. And the equipment and facilities is 80% right now, and we're hoping to get it to 95%. But minimum 80% right now, the state pays for it. So that 1.5 million, any equipment, any furniture goes in this project is eligible for that agri-science equipment grant or facilities grant. So that is...
Does the state offset any of the salaries? Any of the...
No. No, that's the regional, the regional school district takes care of that as just employees...
That's why you get tuition and that, those supplements are dollars for each student. And keep in mind, you received a proposal, two proposals from the, that were from the legislature, legislatures that are in there right now. One of them that allows us to have our referendum for this program in the fall, when our numbers are far more firm, we have more approval and so forth. And the second one, even more importantly, is to fund this project at 95%. Allow the state to fund this project at 95%, hook over by five legislators. And I want, I want you to hear what I've been telling the public, which is 95% isn't a number that we just pulled out of a hat. 95% is the level at which magnet schools are funding. Ag schools are the original magnet schools. So when we say 95%, we're not saying, gee, I hope we get funded at 95%. This is a real number based on facts that are happening in the state, state of Connecticut right now.
Right. Just, I'm looking at your sheet here. When we're in the black, year two and three, with that surplus, where did that money go?
That money helps offset fixed costs in the building for all the other students that are here. It's, that's the, that's what I'm saying, offsetting costs, which is a word. What's the right, what's that?
Offset the operating...
Yeah, offset the operating cost of the school. There's an economic term, I can't think of, college years, I remember it. It's basically the advantage of having this program come here, you have that tuition that pays for the rest of their day. So that money goes through to pay for that English, helps pay for those other...
That was what I was thinking would happen. But normally, when our, our district has a surplus, that would go back to the member towns.
Correct. It's a budget surplus.
Would that happen here?
No, this, I would think you would plan your budgets, assume, knowing that this is the anticipated revenue.
It's not a certain budget.
Correct.
Bob, do you want to take to that?
Just because upon the overall revenue, that offsets our general operating larger budget and the same usual tuitions, because I'm sure we're right now...
Yeah, same thing, exactly.
So I mean, one of the points that we should be making to the public then is that potentially, with a successful program, we could be looking at lower taxes.
Lower people costs because you have more bodies in the building. She's simple.
Use the money that way, yeah.
Right. Yeah, that's true.
Tell them to do what they wish with the money.
Am I supposed to be calling any questions? I don't want to...
Are you not doing your presentation? Back it off for a second.
The only thing that I was going to point out to you is what I said to you earlier because I think it's worth highlighting. And that is when you look at the appendices, on the very first page, we have books. This is where, this is the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet, where it says, "The review process may be curtailed at any point by the withdrawal of the application of the school district." So I want to be very clear about that so that you know that you're not signing off on something that's more information is coming, you know, plain and simple. And other than that, that is the application we now are doing at this point.
Region 14, do they also distribute tuition income to the member towns?
Yes.
Okay. So how are we, we brought this up before, and I just want to make sure that we're going to get tuition income that somehow goes to the program, not to the towns. The surplus might, but we can work the budget accordingly. But what do we do about the tuition? Because that's pretty clear here.
Well, when you build your budget, you build it with all your costs. You have a revenue stream that you have. That revenue stream offsets those costs and you build the account for the balance.
And then we net against.
Okay. So that we get your gross expense. And then at that point, you get the revenue from the town to support the program. Having worked in Region 14, you can demonstrate, and I've demonstrated, it's been done over there many times afterwards, the amount of money that they're taking in far exceeds the amount of money that it's costing them. And what it's doing is reducing the debt budget to the towns. What the town chooses to do with the money, as I said earlier, I don't know. Whatever they want to do with it is their business.
Can I recommend, as we proceed, that you sit down, or someone sits down, or we all sit down, with the boards of finance? Because the accounting's going to change. And then tax years, as I recall from an earlier conversation, it could be hit with a gross number of operating the entire new school system, and it's going to like just be shockingly high as a gross number. And that, but we have to realize that we'll be getting tuition income as an offset. I think it would be worthwhile, as we get closer in, to tell the boards of finance, this is the way it's going to look, don't get excited, the net is better, but the gross is going to look bad.
Absolutely.
And again, just like I said, with the 95% reimbursement, what we have Mr. Beeson talking about, he's not speculating about what might happen. He has lived it in Region 14. So we have the benefit of having someone who has done this in the past. There's no speculation about that.
Have you a motion yet?
No.
May I?
Of course.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application for the agri-science Stedman Academy, as represented.
Seconded by Michelle. Is there anything further? Now, I just want to check, you may have mentioned this already, but the figures, you have your estimates of the students enrolling. I'm very conservative, you know, I think.
Yeah.
That's the bare minimum base. You've been turning away from your district, and there might be more in terms of geographic proximity.
Correct.
New area.
That's right.
And on the other side, there was, oh yeah, this is more to you and the, your salary assessments, does that include benefits and...
Yeah, that's just an average, and also, agri-science students are employed, like at Non-Awake High School, we work 32 days beyond the school year, pretty much year-round, 11 months contract, so that's extended time too. And I just took that...
Are salary benefits in all the...
Yeah, right. Yeah, in the extra days.
The animals don't die over the summer, they still have to be fed.
And my third point is, I think you need to start using the slogan, we put the ag in magnet.
Actually, that's awesome, actually. I'm sick of that, 20 minutes ago, I've been saying. You got to get a bumper sticker. Copyright that, right?
Anyone else? Michelle?
I have two questions. One about the operating cost estimate side there. Is that for just running the program or is that including heating and lighting the new space? Like, how much of the operating is that covering?
That, what I did when I came up with that was I took our operating cost of our program and just used that figure, puffed it down a little bit, and then had it grow a little bit. And that's just the consumables we use, the fuel we use, you know, heating the greenhouses that we use. I just had to come up with some estimate. And yes, there's 340 kids in our program, but I just thought it would be a safe way to do it. And I think, I think it's high on here probably, but in three years, you know, things will be, I just, I just needed a way to stab at it.
That's feeding the animals and buying your seats and all of that stuff.
Oil and every piece of possible consumable thing you need.
And we're perfectly, well, conservative on the student side and higher on the, on the equipment side because we did not want to have to come back and say, "We went way too low on that," which would look like we were deceiving somebody. So that's, that's what we were thinking of as we were doing this.
Can I have that part two?
Is there anything else? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Then I also was wondering about the staff needed at Chapag. Have you thought about the, will we, I'm assuming we would need additional staff and how much? I don't know how many, I don't know how that works.
Well, it's not, it's not even a number. When you put, you know, 50 students in your building and your population has been declining, there may not be, I'm not going to say there's going to be a teacher for every 25 kids or, or something like that because it doesn't work out that way. What I can say is that each year, you know, we talk to you about class sizes, we talk to you about what's happening, and we would continue to do that so there would be no surprise.
Well, we can absorb a lot without hiring anybody. We know that. We know that. I just wasn't sure if, if we were anticipating to hire a couple or, or we just didn't know, we don't know how that'll play out yet.
I think if you hire, if you end up with, you know, two, after four years, 200 and, say 200 new kids in this building, that maybe at that point, you may start seeing you need maybe an English teacher or something, but then that's where that...
Surplus.
Yes, surplus, or we're going to call it the gain, I guess is the safest way to call it. That money from the tuition for those kids is to serve those kids. So if you need to do that, to provide that, that's where it comes from.
Well, which would make sense because the state is not in the habit of overinversing.
Right.
So, so that's why I just, and I think people know that. So we, I don't want to say we're going to be, you know, a million in the positive every year because the state doesn't reimburse that way. There are costs.
Yes, definitely. Against any...
So am I understanding correctly, if, if equipment is not listed here... So am I understanding correctly, if the, if equipment is not listed here, this is what we are asking the state to reimburse us for?
No, this is our best guess of, see, the whole, the whole thing with the application is, Region 12 has to prove to the state board that, is it worth getting a 20 center online? And who are, have they thought of everything? And have, are they going to offer biotechnology, are they going to offer agri-science, and all, you know, agriculture, and all the areas? So what we did is came up with all of those core areas we would want to offer, because the state wants us to, we want it, because it's all part of the ag industry. And each of those areas, what typical equipment do other ag centers have? And we started there. This application goes in, and they hopefully will approve it. And the next step would be figuring out exactly what we're going to build, how much of this existing facility could be used, it's not utilized right now as a part of that, so it's less new construction, or just renovating, where it'll be, what equipment will come in. So that'll be our starting point. And then, once that goes, gets more final, then you have to apply to the state facilities, facilities for operating grants and equipment grant, and that's when it has to be educational specifications for the piece, the real. That's just an idea, that these are areas to show up to the state, we're serious about this, we have all these things we've thought of, and this is the equipment you would need. List the stuff you need for a really good landscaping program, and we're planning there. Certainly will change, but that's just a starting point to show them what, you know, what's going to happen.
Thank you.
Okay. No one else? There's been, there's a motion on the floor, which has been seconded, to approve the application for the Agri-science Stemp Academy, which is presented to the board. If the motion is approved, I should go off and sign the application tonight.
Yep.
With you guys, on behalf of the board. Is there anything further?
Yeah, Jim, I just wanted to, Michelle, you asked a question, I'm not sure if I answered, which is, does this, does this proposal include the cost of operating a building that's going to be built? You notice on page 21, the building costs are not in here at all, because that's a long way from figuring that out. But the actual cost of operating the building, the heat, air conditioning maintenance, that's not in here.
Correct.
So that, that's, so before you spend that three-quarter of a million dollars a year, and we're going to say, recognize that it's not going to be that big, it's going to be smaller than that by some amount.
Is there anything further?
I just want, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, sir. This is exciting, it's wonderful. It might save us, and I think it's good for the kids.
It's absolutely...
I will share with you that I just sent out letters two weeks ago, 219 students who applied, 60 said yes, and 59 said sorry. And I can't wait until we don't have to do that anymore, because the top 45 of those kids unwittingest just happened to be able to have enough demonstrated interest, and their letters were, I mean, so close, what they wanted, and the industry's waiting for them. And I'm just excited that...
And they're good students.
Lighten the tunnel, that those kind of kids will have a chance to pursue this wherever they end up going, whatever gotten they're in.
Oh, can I just add one thing? I think the two young ladies you brought here last time, extremely impressive people, and great spokespeople for the program, spokespersons for the program. And the idea that they would be able to achieve so much in such a short time in high school, and position themselves for college and career that way, and the level of accomplishment, the level of confidence that they projected, absolutely outstanding. I think this will win-win.
I could fill the room with thousands of those kids. Those are just two that would come at night.
That's right.
And incidentally, one of those, the veterinarian, she was going to vet school again, right after that meeting.
St. Kitts.
At St. Kitts. And she texted or emailed our horse management teacher, and just said, "I just want you to know that I am so far ahead of every other kid in my classes because of what you taught us in the horse management class. I know every bone, and all these other kids are coming, and haven't even handled a horse, let alone know anything about them, because they didn't get this experience in the high school level, got a little bit pre-vet and undergrad." And she said, "I am doing skills now that I learned freshman year in high school in teaching other vet students how to haul through a sheep, how to just do things that they need to do." And that's vital, right there. You know, it's just no one proper, she just said, "Just wanted you to know. Thanks for everything you guys did." So it was awesome.
So that's, I think, the last thing I would say is, absolutely a great job on getting the advisory group together. That's a stunning collection of extremely talented people in our community who are behind this. And I think it's a testament to the kind of community we have, and to the sheer hard work in gathering together. Very impressive list.
And reflects the community here, in the interest in these areas. We have 15 more that aren't even on there that keep saying, "Yeah, I want to do this." So the fact that they're determined to work to help with this, and she says a lot about why this is such a great place for this to happen, comes.
I can't wait to send them a letter that I have drafted, to let them know that this has been approved, and thank you for volunteering. Because of your support, we were able to get this through. But you guys go ahead and vote now.
All right. And there's a motion, as I said before, approve the application for the Agri-science Stemp Academy. We moved it seconded. All those who voted, raise your hand.
Yes.
Looks like it's unanimous, Alan.
Yes.
Thank you, Kim Gallo and Bill Davenport. Thank you very much for all your work on this, and everybody else. We very appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Do you have something in mind to say?
You have a pen in your hand, well, go ahead and sign.
I wrote down this.
I wrote mine.
I was walking in.
I love the pressure, I did write mine.
I was too, you wrote.
You could have mine, and I'll opt in.
Write it online, you need to.
It's just the first step. We have to still get the say word in English, but it's a huge step.
What is the next step?
What's the next step? Goes to State Board of Education. When you look at the appendices, you'll see that there might be a site visit, there'd be a long, refined, and they will present it to the State Board of Education as a concept. The State Board of Education will say, "This sounds great," and they will send it to the legislature for funding.
That's in June?
I don't think the legislature...
June, that was the end of session.
Come out to cave with us.
I'm going to help. Well, thank you. I'll be back.
Jim, I'm not sure if the mic could pick up the process that Kim was just...
Well, I'm going to say that for anyone listening on tape.